Okay, perfect. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of West Miami Regular City Commission Hybrid Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 4th, and it is 10:03 a.m. Madam Clerk, if you could please read us the instructions on joining via Zoom.
Yes, Madam Mayor, good morning. This meeting is conducted as a hybrid meeting pursuant to a resolution approved by the City Commission on October 30th, 2020. The instructions to participate in the virtual meeting, the City Commission meeting is held virtually, and the public may enter the meeting at zoom at HTTPS colon slash slash zoom.us/j/3255236059. The public can comment during public comments, and the person wishing to submit public comments will be afforded three minutes to speak and must submit first and last name for the record. The instruction to access the virtual commission meeting by phone, you have to first dial 3130117158592, and when you connect, a machine will ask for the meeting ID, and then you'll dial 3255236059, followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host accepts and gives you access to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, before we go on the agenda, normal roll call and everything. Can I just make one little point about our setup? Just something I'm realizing now that I don't know if we can fix it now, but maybe in the future. We have people in the audience, but they have no idea what the hell we're talking about up here. Because the cook's plan is and the manager and the clerk and everyone are just being heard on our audio, right? You guys don't hear anything, right? So you guys still know what the host's doing. Okay, I'm not saying it's going to be an issue necessarily with this because they have a hearing. Unless Blanis, of course, Commissioner Blanis has questions I don't know how they're going to ask. But, you know, something to think about.
And Vice Mayor, to answer part of your question, the laptop that's up there is set up for anyone from the public who wishes to speak. So he'll go up and I want an instruction to put the headset on, so he'll be able to hear and speak on his item. That's going to be just for that item, obviously. But to your point, maybe we can get Mr. Quintana to livestream the meeting with sound on our TV.
Yeah.
If we let me, let me take a two-minute break and go speak to Mr. Quintana, and so I can address the Vice Mayor's question. So I'm going to go off the video.
I'm calling Mr. Quintana as we speak.
It's not necessarily a problem because, I mean, in this meeting, I mean, I think if they can deal with their hearing with and hear everyone through the computer, there's, you know, I don't know if there's a need to complicate things today, but in the future, I mean, your call, but.
Well, no, let's take it, let's take a two-minute break and speak to Mr. Quintana. But in the meantime, Mr. Barrios, what you know, and is that your counsel? When your item comes up, you will go to the podium with the headset, so you'll be able to hear and see the entire meeting on the laptop. But we're going to see if we can address getting the TV on for you for the rest of the meeting. Perfect, so let's just take a two-minute break while the manager speaks to Mr. Quintana on this.
Yeah, I'm on the phone with him.
Mr. Perez is on the phone with Mr. Quintana right now.
Perfect, thank you. Testing 1-2, 1-2.
Also, puede poner el screen con el meeting or no? Okay. Okay, there we go. Also, puede poner el screen con el meeting or no?
Ya dónde?
Puede apagar el audio de eso en la market screen, el audio ellos pueden oír. Ahora sí. Okay, so gentlemen, you can hear.
You can hear, okay? And now you have the view of the screen. Okay, Madam Manager, we have audio in the chambers, and Mr. Q has the screen, the Zoom screen on the television screen, so everyone here can see and hear what's going on. Okay?
Okay, Madam Mayor.
All right, so let's resume the meeting.
I can hear an echo there. There's going to be a slight echo, but we're going to have to live with that.
Hey, Madam Clerk, I believe Mr. Penna for the invocation, please.
Please rise. God of all nations, Father of human family, we give thanks for the freedoms we exercise and the many blessings of democracy we enjoy in these United States of America. We ask for your protection and guidance for all who devote themselves to the common good, working for justice and peace at home and around the world. We lift up all our elected duly-elected leaders and public servants, those who will serve as president, legislators, judges, and those in the military and law enforcement. Heal us from our differences and unite us, O Lord, with common purpose, dedication, and commitment to achieve liberty and justice in the years ahead for all the people, and especially for those most vulnerable in our midst. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanis. Could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, roll call. Mayor Ronda Rodriguez. Present. Vice Mayor Edi Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Present. Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Present. Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Present.
Present. And Commissioner Luciana Suárez is excused today. You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And let it noted that up in the chambers, we do have a quorum pursuant to our hybrid resolution model. Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón, myself, Mayor Ronda Rodriguez, and Commissioner Candida Blanca are present in the chambers. And next item, Madam Clerk.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 21st, 2020 Regular Commission Virtual Meeting.
Need a motion?
Say go.
I have a motion in a second.
Okay, I couldn't hear. Who made the motion, Madam Mayor?
Who motioned?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor did not motion.
You're muted, Mr. Vice Mayor.
He was not at the meeting, so he cannot vote. Commissioner Blanca, could you change yours to a motion? So I need a second. Commissioner Blanca has a motion. I need a second.
What meeting was this? Was this the special meeting?
No, the regular meeting of October 21st.
Okay, second.
Motion in a second. Aye.
Aye.
For your item passes.
Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Has anyone registered to speak to a public comment?
I don't see anybody on the chat. And Madam Mayor, if you have someone in the chambers that would like to make public comments?
We do, but they're here for an item on the agenda, correct, gentlemen? Yes.
So none of this time.
Next item, please.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Commission and everyone in attendance. I submitted a report last evening. It was emailed to you last night at around 6:30, 6:45. As a reminder, we have three holidays that we observe this coming, this November. First one is Wednesday, November 11th. We observe Veterans Day. And to all our veterans, enjoy your day for you have earned it. City Hall will be closed for business. However, there will be garbage collection as customary, and if anyone has an emergency, they should contact the police department. The city will also observe Thursday, November 26th and Friday, November 27th as our recognized Thanksgiving holiday. Same here, City Hall will be closed for business. There will be collection, garbage collection as customary. In the case of the community center, we are making the preparations for these holidays so that our seniors are not left without a meal. So Evelyn, who is joining us in the meeting, I am certain has already made the provisions to work with the menu for the holiday meals. This is a good opportunity to mention that unfortunately this year, the Micasuki tribe will not be donating the turkeys as a result of the pandemic. I am sure that their business has also been affected, and we have been advised by their office. They contacted Evelyn Paz's office and advised Evelyn that this year they're just going to stay put, if you would, and hopefully we're in for better times. As we get closer to the holidays, I would like to remind the mayor and city commissioners that the issue of the Thanksgiving luncheon was put on hold at the last meeting. We were asked to remind you. We were waiting to see if we had any new updates from the Office of the Mayor of Miami-Dade County regarding the COVID restrictions. So I bring this to your attention at this time because Thanksgiving is upon us. Now, we could do, we could either have something outdoors or just have mini luncheons within departments that will include smaller groups so that we can follow our social, physical distancing guidelines. It's up to you all how we go about it. And because obviously the city pays for this lunch, so I think that, you know, either way, everybody's going to be very cautious, and it's up to you on how you wish to proceed with this. But we do need to make a decision. Either that or we cancel it this year.
Madam Manager, why don't we take up one item at a time? So let's stop here and discuss this one before you continue with your report. Let me ask you, what does, what does everyone think as far as the employees and the staff as far as having the individuals? Is that, is that their preference that each department has their own little Thanksgiving meal together?
Our preference is to have a united group because we are all city employees irrespective of our title. I think everybody's going to be very careful. I think we can ask everybody to bring their mask and wear it, and we could have something outdoors, maybe out back, and, you know, have a luncheon there and try to plan for tables to be and seats to be apart from each other and just plan to be safe, that's all. But it is a time where people unite, all departments unite, and we get to break bread, if you would, as a group. And I think that's uplifting and it helps morale. So I would encourage us to continue on with our traditional luncheon. And, you know, let it, let it be up to each individual. If they feel that their immune system is not strong enough to participate, then we will understand that. But I think we should have a Thanksgiving lunch. I think we're, we have a lot to be grateful for.
Agreed, and if you, having one altogether is the preference of the majority, then I think the weather is conducive to outdoors. The weather's been beautiful. Hopefully it continues. And obviously, outdoors is better than indoors. We can socially distance more and we're not inside the building. So I'm fine with the outdoors.
Madam Mayor, Madam Manager, I would suggest we could hold it at the pavilion at the recreation center. It's an open facility. The tables that are in there, we could take out and put the smaller-sized tables and arrange it there.
Mr. Penna, we talked, yeah, we talked about that. If I may, Madam Mayor, respond to Mr. Penna's suggestion. We thought about that. The issue is taking everything over there in terms of setting up. I mean, it's no big deal. We can do it, but it is, I think, a little bit better to, because we have a kitchenette in here and we can, you know, it's not that much of a distance to set up here. We thought about that. I spoke to Carrie about that. Again, the park is a beautiful outdoor space, and it's whatever the preference is.
The only thing I would.
Be mindful, we do need to be mindful that at some moment in time, the kids will arrive there after school. And so, John, what time, if I may, Madam Mayor, just to ask our parks director a question, what time does the first group arrive?
1:45.
1:45. So we would have to have like an 11 o'clock, 11:30 luncheon to be able to make sure that everybody is gone from the park so that we can limit the number of people that come in contact with the children.
Without, without protection from the rain, it could be a rainy weekend, so.
Yep.
Just a guess.
Yep, and I agree that that is a beautiful site where we can, you know, gather, and it's outdoor. So I'm game, I'm game. I just want to let you know, put it out there that we have after-school children there and parents or come and pick them up or drop them off. Some come in the school bus. So I want to take extra precautions.
And can't we always, I know it's Thanksgiving, but maybe we can venture away from normal Thanksgiving food and have something catered in, some companies that come and set up and serve so we don't have to be the ones to take all the food over there. I mean, it's just a thought. There's many, I mean, off the top of my head, barbecue. You know, we can have, if no one minds, venturing away from Thanksgiving, typical Thanksgiving food. We can serve something else outside.
Sure, sure. If that's the, if that's the decision to have it out there, then I'm, I love it. I think it's a, it's a beautiful pavilion and the park is being renovated continuously. And, you know, I think it's a great place. I don't know about the logistics for the employees, you know, who park here, our Public Works employees, if they're going to drive to the park. We'll work out the logistics. That's not a problem. Or we'll bus them in. So we'll work it out. If that is the decision of the commission, then we will make it happen.
Well, I don't see why this, the location should be just our decision. This is a Thanksgiving for everyone. So I, I don't feel right in making this decision for everyone or just us five making the decision for everyone. So why don't we just decide, let us decide. We'll vote on whether or not, yes, we want to have one or no. And then you all decide after you've talked with everyone to see exactly where is best.
And that's what I was going to suggest. Let me take a survey, a real quick survey, and see if there's a preference for outback or we can, if there's a preference for the park, and then let the employees decide.
My colleagues, are you okay with that? With deciding yes or no and then letting everyone else decide where?
Yes.
Is that, can I get a thumbs up if everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, I see it as, I see it as an employee and administration thing.
Correct. Let's let the employee and administration decide where they want to have it. It's a Thanksgiving for everyone. Okay, so all in favor of having a Thanksgiving luncheon together? Aye.
Aye.
And that would be, that would be for Friday, November 20th.
Okay. You let us know, Madam Manager, time and location, but you have a unanimous aye as far as having a Thanksgiving luncheon altogether.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much to all the members of the City Commission.
Okay, so now we can move on to the remainder of your report.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring up the issue of the holiday luncheon again at the next commission meeting. We'll have time to plan something for that. Our potable water groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for tomorrow morning. This is just a reminder. Flyers were sent out to our state lawmakers, our District 6 office for Miami-Dade County, our legislative consultants, our grant writer, our city engineers and staff. In addition, flyers have been delivered to everyone within the area where work will take place. Unfortunately, and due to COVID-19, there will be no refreshments served at the groundbreaking ceremony. We may, we may purchase water bottles and have those available there. The weather should be nice. Hopefully, hopefully, that storm is not going to be anywhere near so that we can have a very pleasant event tomorrow. The countywide curfew, there have been no changes to the curfew. Our officers continue to enforce the curfew as necessary. The next item in my report is air conditioners. The city is moving forward with a replacement of the air conditioning units as approved by the mayor and city commission. And through the budget process, the allocation has been made. We went through a short bid process and we obtained some bids. Work will be underway very shortly. The bids came in consistent with our budget parameters. The after-school care program, we had a soft start to the after-school care program with approximately 12 to 15 children. As of this writing, we're averaging 23 to 25, John, per day.
That's correct.
Okay, and we're, we're getting calls and we're getting children trickle in more and more, correct?
Yeah, we have kids, parents come in to register, and different kids come every day because they don't all attend school physically. So it's.
Right. Right. Some of them still have virtual models and some of them have the physical presence at the school on campus. So we're, we're seeing an uptick in the numbers, and that's, that's a good sign. So I'm glad because it's given us time to gauge our own performance there. And, you know, I'm happy to report that there are no COVID cases reported in the after-school care program. So we're being very cautious with sanitizing and, you know, just staying, keeping in touch with what the kids are doing and making sure that they practice safe protocols. The next item on my report, unless you have a question, includes the CARES Act. The city has received, as of yesterday, $23,000 in CARES Act reimbursements for laptop computers. Those that have been set up for you are reimbursable upstairs so for the purpose of conducting your Zoom and now hybrid model. We've purchased sanitizers, signs, and now professional sanitizing companies to come in and help us with staying with the CDC recommendations. We've also included a reimbursement request for the recreation center employees that have been assigned from day one to the delivery of the additional senior meals. And certainly, this reimbursement is good news for the city. So we will continue to keep you informed as to what we spend and what monies are coming in and being considered for reimbursement.
Madam Manager, if I could stop you for one second. How much money approximately do you expect that we should, we have yet to receive?
That we have yet to receive? If all our projects are validated and approved, I am looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 on the conservative side.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on my report involves the Southwest 67th incident, the Southwest 67th Avenue incident that occurred two weeks ago yesterday. The city of West Miami responded to a police-involved shooting on 67th Avenue. Thankfully, the officer continues to recover from his injury. Since then, we met with each commissioner individually in an effort to provide information that will be helpful for all of us to move forward in several directions because I think that we have several issues at hand, some involving police and some involving the direction that this commission will take moving forward to protect the quality of life for all the residents stated by our mayor, our vice mayor, and our city commission during our briefings. As such, we have reached out to the management companies and the owners of the newer buildings on Southwest 67th Avenue. The chief, the major, and I participated in conversations with the owners of three out of the five buildings along the commercial corridor, and we will be addressing the outcome of these conversations as soon as we meet with the other management companies. We provided an agenda as requested by the Waterton Management Company, and we're waiting to hear back from them now on a meeting date. We will stay on this issue and try to swiftly get a convenient mutually agreeable date. A full report of what we have accomplished during these conversations will be provided under a separate memo. I think the first order of business is on the agenda today under the report of the chief in my office. I wanted to outline what I gathered from our meetings should be our next phases. The next phase of the conversation involves a discussion on the possibility of enacting an ordinance requiring additional security officers at the buildings. Currently, we are conducting a research on models of ordinances in use by other municipalities. The next City Commission agenda will include an item addressing the start of the city's EER process. EER stands for Evaluation and Appraisal Report. Additionally, the city may wish to continue, the city may wish to commence with a charrette that could involve a renaissance or creating a model for the balance of our commercial corridors, which is beneficial during our EER process. So I think that we have several angles that need immediate attention, and I would encourage for us to move forward. And to say the least, it looks like 2021 will. And to say the least, it looks like twenty-twenty-one will start off as a very interesting year as we move along with all these items that we need to, um, follow up on. If you have any questions, or if you think I've left anything out, we did meet individually, so please, uh, remind me, ask me, or feel free to call me at your convenience to, to discuss, but you will see more reports, um, being generated on this issue. Any questions on this, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor?
Madam Manager, I know we have an, that is an agenda item, so we'll wait to hear from the chief and then we'll address any questions we have at that time.
Thank you. Um, the next item on my report is the holiday decorations. Incredible, but yes, the end of the year is almost here. And all, although our yearly lighting of the tree ceremony has been canceled due to COVID, we'll be starting to make some plants to decorate for the upcoming holidays. With this year, we would like to focus on decorations for City Hall. Um, I will be discussing a meeting with Mr. Penna to see where the best place to, uh, for the placement of our large tree. I don't know that we have enough space in front of City Hall. I think it would be beautiful, um, if we could place it out front. However, spacing is an issue. And so we will find a suitable and safe place for it, where residents can come and take pictures and, and enjoy at our, our Christmas tree. We will provide you with an update as soon as we lay out the, um, format for the decorations. The community center during the next six to eight weeks will be focusing on sprucing up the community center in anticipation of the return of our seniors, which I hope is very soon. Additionally, we are recommending to make some improvements to the entrance of our City Hall, and the community center will include new pavers and a fountain in front of the center so that we can remove what is left of the old damaged tree and the old landscaped area. This enhancement will also serve to attract prospective renters in the future and provide a refreshed environment consistent with the improvements to City Hall and the new paint job. So I hope it will be a very pleasing, um, you know, it's, it'll be a pleasing, um, yeah, City Hall for our residents to visit. And something that is not in my report, and I hope we don't have to deal with, is we're keeping a a close eye on Edda, the tropical storm that is out there, that, uh, was a, came in as a, as a major hurricane to Nicaragua. So we'll be monitoring that and, um, and keeping the person informed if there's anything to be concerned about, or if any preparations will become necessary. That concludes my report. If anybody has any questions, I would, um, I would be happy to respond to those.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Any questions for the manager on her report other than the sixty-seventh Avenue incidents, which we'll hear from the chief on? Madam Manager, I don't see any questions. So, Madam Clerk, next item.
Thank you.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Good morning. Uh, my report is that, um, I have stated before that the Banyum appeal was scheduled for November twelfth. However, uh, the ups and downs events, uh, due to the current, um, situation, uh, this may be extended for another three weeks. And that was the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. And I know you wanted to speak to me before the meeting, and I wasn't able to, so I'll phone you right after the meeting if that's okay with you.
I'm sorry?
That I will call you after the meeting, because I know you wanted to speak before, but I wasn't able to, so I'll call you after the meeting.
No, no, I, uh, the only reason is that, that I, uh, I call you was that, uh, you were not on mute and, uh, I was advising you that we're not on mute, so, uh, I don't need to talk to you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
No report at this time. Uh, Madam Manager covered, um, the events of tomorrow, the kickoff for the Watermain project.
Thank you, we can barely hear you.
Uh, I have no report at this time, just, um, just following up on what the, the manager said about tomorrow, that we're looking forward to kicking off the Watermain project.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
Uh, I do have something, not necessarily a report, but a huge, huge, huge thank you to, um, everyone that participated all the way from setting up to planning to acting out, handing out candy. Our Halloween event was, again, a huge success. Not as elaborate as last year's, but, you know, under the circumstances, we all did a phenomenal job. Uh, I know the rec staff prepared somewhat of, somewhat of a five hundred bags of candy. So, John, thank you and your staff for that. And I know you were out there handing out candy as well, so thank you for that. Mr. Penna, I know you, you ran the decorations, and you and your team were outstanding. Those, I, I couldn't, I was blown away by the decorations. A phenomenal job. So thank you. Thank your staff for all their hard work. Um, Madam Manager, I know you and, and the front office and Gotti did all the, the pre-planning. Um, it was, it was extraordinary. My, my partner in crime, Commissioner Blanis, side by side, I think we were, we were a dynamic duo. We had Freddie being Freddie at the front of the line with John. Uh, we had Commissioner Blanis and myself towards the end with our, with our trusty sidekick, J O, who was amazing. All the energy that, that J O had out there was, was mind-boggling. And the kids, I got so many positive comments and, and so many thank yous for the city putting on that for the children, because so very few went out trick-or-treating, if any. So everyone I heard from was just, you know, praising the city for doing great things like that for them and, and thanking us. And I know that the manager said she had a lot of positive, um, comments and thank yous. So, from the bottom of my heart, because you know how I am about the children and Commissioner Blanis, I know who you are, I want to thank each and every one of you for the extraordinary night that, that we had for Thanksgiving, I mean, for Thanksgiving, for Halloween. And John, I know you went to bed thinking or hearing my, my, my speech. You dreamt of it. So I apologize for that, but I had to play the part, you know, I was in character. So I apologize for the nightmares that I, I might have given you that, that evening. My apologies. Um, anyone else want to comment on, on Halloween during this time?
I also went to bed with nightmares of the
You heard me?
From across the city.
Good, then I was effective. Commissioner Blanis, anything?
No, I, I, I think it was, uh, very successful, you know, thanks to, to, to all. And, um, you know, we made a lot of children laugh and, and we even made some of them cry, so I think we're successful.
But the ones when we saw tears forming, we, we backed off immediately and we, we tried to make them laugh, so we, we tried to preempt the tears when we saw them. The water we stopped, they stopped us in our track and we kind of changed to comedy. Um, so that we wouldn't make any of them cry. Um, so anyway, thank you to all. Um, and that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Yes, uh, uh, next item, item ten, unfinished business. Item ten A, status and discussion slash recommendation on opening of playgrounds in city properties by city manager.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Um, as you know, I have been participating and continue to participate in our managers' meeting, and we're, managers speak to each other, and I've asked the question on playgrounds. I know John Michael has had a, um, um, he's, he's gone out and looked at other parks to see what they're doing with the playground equipment. Um, if it's open or not, but I think it's time for us to think about opening the playgrounds, both at Cooper Park and at the rec center with one daily cleaning and that we put up the appropriate signs. And we have some, some great samples to work with, and we can tailor that to our needs. And I believe that it's, it, it may be time to allow the children now that the weather's better and you know, things, at least in this neck of the woods, appears to be fine. Um, I, I think we should open up the parks, the playground area, not, not the parks, I'm sorry, the playground areas. I would wait, and I'm not sure is, if, uh, at, as of this date, the bathroom is complete at the Garden Club Park. But I can tell you that at least the, uh, Cooper Park and, and Recreation Center, I think we should start opening it, and we've discussed this with Mr. Penna. And obviously, we, we will be cleaning the equipment once a day and posting some recommendations from the health department on, and the new norm guide on how children should, which, which age group should wear a mask. Uh, what they need to do after they get out of the equipment and obviously use their hand sanitizers and, and, and start to slowly but surely, you know, get back into a sense of normalcy, if you would. So I wanted to bring this up for your consideration, and, um, and there it is.
Madam Manager, what are you and John Michael hearing about other, uh, city parks, play, I'm sorry, playgrounds, uh, playgrounds?
John, I know you've been participating with our parks group. I have been hearing that most cities are o- opening their, their parks, their playgrounds, and they're using proper signage. John, um, I know you're part of the Parks Coalition, and I know you have your bi-weekly meetings as well, so if you want to report that if the mayor would allow him to say a few words on this.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, it's pretty much the same thing, as long as there, everybody who has opened is providing proper signage and cleaning daily, which is what the recommendation is.
And I know at, at the rec, at least if we open the playgrounds, the after-school kids will have access to the playgrounds, which is, which is a good thing for them. Uh, you know, wearing the masks, of course, and sanitizing their hands before and after. Um,
They're doing that as they go outside. Either way, they, they're used to keeping the masks on because of school, so it's been an easy transition as far as that goes.
And John, I, I have heard from the children and some of the parents of the children that attend the after-school, that they're very happy with the way you and your staff are, are running the after-school pr- program and the precautions that the city and, and and your department has taken as a whole, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this item?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I, I, I received a lot of calls and texts about the playgrounds as well. Um, asking when they're gonna open, so I think it's, it's time, the rest of the, you know, the rest of the county has pretty much done it, so there's no reason to lag behind on that. Uh, so I'm in favor.
And I as well have had, uh, questions about when, and everyone understands why we have it, but I, I have had questions as to when. Uh, any other questions? Commissioner Blanis, Commissioner, Commissioner Blanca, any questions on opening the playgrounds? Commissioner, I know parks is yours, so what are your thoughts?
Uh, you know, I've had the same, you know, I've had, you know, a lot of people ask me when and, you know, uh, I basically said that we were just waiting, you know, to see what, what other municipalities will do and what the county will do and, and, uh, reassure them that, that we will be opening soon, so I, I, I'm in favor, as long as we're gonna do it safely.
Um, are we okay with, um, leaving the Garden Club? Uh, Mr. Penna, are we done with the bathroom at the Garden Club?
I have a final inspection on this afternoon.
Okay, so is it, is it the wish of the commission to open all parks or start with two and then face the others in?
I would rather we start with two and then face Garden Club in after, obviously, um, it's inspect, the bathroom is, is fully done and it's completely operational. So I'm in favor of opening the playground at the Recreation Center and at Cooper Park, and then waiting until the Garden Club is, is ready. Miss, uh, Commissioner Blanis, go ahead.
I think, I think this decision should be more, uh, impingement, uh, impinging upon what the administration can do, not us. We don't know what the administration is capable of, you know, on a, on, on a daily basis as far as cleaning, as far as supervising, and making sure, you know, that, that, you know, we're doing, you know, what it is that we need to be doing, so, you know, uh, I leave it all up to the administration and, and to the capabilities of them being able to, you know, to perform what, what, uh, you know, cleaning the, uh, the playground and so on and so forth, so, I, I yield to them.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and I, and I echo that, that sentiment. Uh, I know Vice Mayor has already said he, he's, he's fine with opening the playgrounds. I'm fine with opening the playgrounds. Commissioner Blanca, are you?
I'm fine.
Okay, and Commissioner Blanis, but I agree. This is all gonna be dependent on staff, and, and when you're ready, um, and know that we're capable of, of opening safely, then we will, we will yield to you all. The sooner the better. But we will leave the final opening of the playgrounds up to our very capable staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That said, I want to end it, uh, with a final recommendation, and that would be to, uh, safely open the, the part, the playground areas in our parks as soon as the signs are up. We're going to be proceeding to order the signs. Those take two or three business days. Um, in, in the best of the cases. So I would say we're shooting for Monday or Tuesday of next week, so that we can have those signs installed.
Perfect, and I think as far as weather, timing is perfect, because the weather is very conducive to outside play, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Commissioner Blanis, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, any input from you, from what, uh, just been discussed?
No, as a matter of fact, I agree with you, uh, uh, Mr. Blanis. I think that they, it would be up to the, uh, uh, city manager to, uh, establish the parameters of the administration. Uh, so I don't have anything else to add to your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Commissioner. And Madam Clerk, before you go on to the next item, I am so sorry, I did not thank the police department when I was thanking everyone for Halloween and I, I, chief, um, officers, I am so sorry, I, I left you out. You were, you were in my mind and I, and I didn't verbalize it, so as soon as we moved on to the item, I, I, I realized I hadn't said anything. You were out there in force, as always, supporting us and, and keeping us and our residents safe throughout the entire event. Um, again, great job, chief, and thank you, and I'm so sorry that I, I didn't say it at when I was thanking everyone else, but you were in my mind to thank you, and I, I failed, so thank you all, and thank all the men and women of our great police department for being out there and helping. Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, uh, item eleven, under new business agenda items, item eleven A, request for mitigation of lien for code violation at the property located at sixty-four sixty Southwest Eighth Street, West Miami, Florida, three three one four four, in owner, Abreu Three LLC.
Point of privilege, Madam Clerk, and as a full disclosure, you all know, well, many of you know that my car, um, was hit on city property during early voting. And on Monday, I believe it was, I dropped off my car to West Miami Paint and Body Shop, which is owned by Carlos Abreu, so I am going to, um, step out of the room for this item. Um, as full disclosure, um, for, um, Carlos's sake and my own, I will not participate in this item.
Wait, wait a minute, uh, I, I, I missed that.
Okay, so my, my car was hit, um, during early voting. I was parked right in front of the police department, how ironic. Um, and I took my car to West Miami Paint and Body Shop on Monday after the, after Progressive approved my claim. And they're the ones that are going to be performing the work on my car, and that is owned by Carlos Abreu. So I am not going to participate, um, in this next item.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, this is awkward, because, uh, you're supposed to have, uh, a quorum, uh, present. So, uh, I don't think that there is any, uh, 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 rule that prohibits you from participating, when in fact, all you're doing is having your car fixed. When in fact, all you're doing is having your car fixed.
That's it, I left, that's I I left it there on Monday.
Yeah, but there's there's no conflict there, Madam Mayor.
Okay. You're you're the expert, Mr. Attorney, and thank you for that legal opinion, then I will stay put.
Okay.
Uh Madam Mayor, I think furthermore, the property in question does not include where you're servicing your vehicle. The property in question is an adjacent property that happens to. Uh be owned by Mr. Abreu's um company or LLC.
Very well.
The issue is whether or not you renew your benefits to yourself. And there's no benefits, you're paying for the service, right?
Well, sir, I'm not the 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 person who received the ticket, that insurance company is paying for it.
She was not at fault, Mr.
I was not at fault, my car was parked, I wasn't even in my car.
No, no, I'm not saying that, you see, you're uh trying to excuse yourself because you're having your car fixed at that particular location.
Correct.
And what I said that is that if uh uh any any conflict would annul, if you have a personal benefit. Uh from the participation, you're not getting any uh benefit from the participation. Because you have left your car, uh and you're gonna pay for it, so uh. There's a conflict there, okay?
Thank you, sir, thank you for that, and we will proceed, with that said. Thank you, sir, put the headsets on. And uh Mr. Q, can you come and unmute? The podium microphone? Or can you see? Can you see to unmute, or, Mr. Q? There we go.
Great. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, uh Madam Manager. Mr. Attorney, this, my name is Guillermo Cuadra with offices at eighty two hundred Northwest, Forty First Street in the City of Doral, Florida. Uh I'm here with Mr. Carlos Abreu, owner of uh Abreu Three LLC. Uh owner of the property in question, and and right off the bat, I just want to go ahead and. Uh for the record, uh and for the peace of mind of the body, uh I just want to go ahead and say that from uh. The property owner, there would be absolutely no objection with with you participating in this, regardless of the outcome of of this hearing, we wouldn't. Object in any way, shape, or form. Uh having said that, I just want to convey to to the Commission that Mr. Abreu uh. Bought the property back in twenty thirteen. The particular violation in question was already in place for some time prior to that. And it is my belief that all the violations or the conditions that causes violations. Have been corrected and are no longer present, and for that reason, we presented our request. Uh to the City of West Miami, and we humbly ask that uh that we can go ahead and perhaps. Through a nominal payment, we can go ahead and do away with the existing violation and and we can clear any stain on title on the property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Penna, do you have anything to add on this item, any background information?
Uh this was a property that was owned prior uh to Mr. Abreu by uh uh Mrs. Pinero. Uh where there was a fence around the front area, grass area of the property, and it had been uh. Damaged in an auto accident, and it just remained there for years. Uh upon his purchase of the property, the the fence was removed. And the violation was cleared at that, uh however, there have been. A lien placed on the property for the time it took to for for the the previous owner to deal with it. She never did deal with it, and Mr. Abreu took it over. However, they weren't unaware that the that the violation was on the property when they purchased the property. And uh our recommendation is uh as uh Mr. Cuadra stated, as uh we discussed with the manager, uh a five hundred dollar uh uh mitigation fee. In order to cover our costs involved in the. In the violation.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Are there any questions from the Commission for either staff or Mr. Attorney?
No, I don't have anything.
Any questions from staff, um from 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 the Commission?
I agree with Mr. Penna.
Commissioner, let me unblock, let me unmute you. Mr. Q, can you unmute, Commissioner Blanca?
I agree with Mr. Penna.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
I have a motion. We haven't read the resolution yet, we haven't read the resolution, that's what I thought. Uh any any questions for staff? Okay.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, my office concurs uh with Mr. Penna's recommendation, we did speak about it uh before the meeting. As this has been an ongoing issue, um and there has been, there was compliance from day one. And um as soon as Mr. Abreu purchased the property, so um. At least so that we can recoup the time on the file is is the the five hundred dollar recommendation.
And that was exactly, and my question is always to be sure that we have recouped, recovered the money that we have spent on the file, so. With that said, I hear no other questions. Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just another question, uh we need the time in which to pay the five hundred dollars.
Customarily, it's thirty days, is that correct? Mr. Attorney, is that, is thirty days sufficient? Counsel? Thirty days is sufficient.
Noted, may I read the resolution, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Yes, item eleven B, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami. Authorizing the City Manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of five hundred dollars. For Abreu Three LLC on court enforcement lien case number. One uh two zero two zero zero two for court violation of the property located at sixty four sixty Southwest Eighth Street, West Miami, Florida. Providing that if payment, payment in full is not paid in thirty days, then the amount owed. Shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date.
I make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a first and a second, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I indulge you for twenty seconds, now that that the item has been disposed of, to address the Commission? Uh very briefly, I was dismayed to hear in in the in the manager's report. That you, that that the city would not be receiving a donation of turkeys. Uh by by I believe it was. Uh I think that I agree with some of the comments that were made, that we have a lot to be thankful for, so I'm gonna be contacting your city manager. Because I think that there's something that 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 we could do about that, and uh for my office, uh I have a lot of friends in the city. And and I don't think there is any reason why we couldn't have this turkey drive, so I'll make sure that uh if we can help, that we do so. I just want to convey that.
Uh thank you, sir, yes, um talk to the city manager about that and. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much again, great to see you.
Thank you.
Uh Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Yes, item eleven C, report by the Office of the City Manager and Chief of Police in reference to sixty seventh Avenue recent incident.
Uh Madam Mayor, I'd like to um to see if we could yield to our Chief of Police again. Um I think this is the first phase of our ongoing conversations, and I think he's got a better grip. On what we need at this time to um address the situation. Um in the general area of Southwest sixty seventh Avenue.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Uh unfortunately, uh we're we're here to report again, and and we met individually, and we spoke about this. In reference to the incident that occurred on October twentieth, at Celeste West Gables Two Apartment Complex. Uh twenty oh one Southwest sixty seventh Avenue. As we're all aware, we had a narcotics operation being conducted by the county and possibly some federal agencies. Um with that that uh unfortunately turned into a police shooting. The officer, by the grace of God, is 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 well. Uh one inch, a little bit to the left and to the right, could have cost him his life, he got shot in the head, uh he was hit in the ear. And uh he is, he is doing okay. Uh as far as the investigation itself is concerned, I still am not at liberty to speak about it, this is an investigation that's being handled by FD Elite. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement and Miami-Dade County. And we won't have a final, a final say as to. As to what information I can give out or not, this this may take a long time before we get. Uh some details, however. Uh i- i- in general, they were conducting an narcotics operation that unfortunately turned into a shootout between a suspect and a police officer. The suspect was shot, he was placed into custody along with three other individuals. Um as a result of that incident, uh oh by the way, forty one shots were fired inside that building. In front of that apartment, had those shots gone east to west as opposed to. Uh I'm I'm sorry, as uh uh if the shots would have gone north. Uh to south, we may, we could have had some more tragedies. Uh fortunately, they were east to west, uh in other words, towards inside, towards the front door of the apartment and then out of the apartment. Um and but but forty one shots were fired, this could have been extremely tragic. Uh nevertheless, because of this, we went ahead and. Uh started to gather the statistics of what has been going on in these buildings, we have noticed an uptick. We had done a report in March that we turned into the City Manager. Um it wasn't as alarming, but i- it was just a matter of showing the calls for service that we were getting at these buildings now. Uh these buildings have gone up, obviously, in the last five years, and it's taken time. And we just haven't kept kept up with the amount of police officers that we need to. To in fact. Cover these these many more people living in the city. And and I I think we've been uh. Very frugal and in an attempt to try to keep it to a low roar, if you will, as much as we can, but here it is, and the numbers. Are overwhelming, the report that I gave all to you individually. Uh was from January first, two thousand twenty to October twenty first of two thousand twenty. And the numbers for each building are outrageous, uh twenty oh one Southwest sixty seventh Avenue had a total. Of a hundred and fifty eight calls. Uh twenty one oh one had a hundred and thirty three calls. Uh twenty two oh one Southwest sixty seventh Avenue had a hundred and twenty five calls. For a total of four hundred and sixteen, that report has been updated. To present day, today. We have an additional. Five calls at twenty oh one, an additional nine calls at twenty one oh one, and an additional five calls at twenty two oh one. Now, the the total was four sixteen, the total now is four hundred and thirty five. So the numbers continue to go up, the other three buildings. Um nine fifty Southwest fifty seventh Avenue. Has a total of fifty one calls. Uh sixty two ninety Southwest Eighth Street has two calls, and sixty three forty Southwest Eighth Street has twenty nine calls. That that, those three buildings went up by one call, so you can see the. The the unbalance, if you will, of the buildings on sixty seventh Avenue. So. Our plan, as we've been meeting with the manager consistently since this incident. Uh is to augment the Police Department. And and as in old adage goes, if you want to tell, i- i- if you want God to laugh, tell him your plans. So we had a plan. And uh unfortunately, we found out within the last two to three days that we're gonna have further attrition. In the department. So our plan originally was to. Augment the department by two, two immediately. And uh unfortunately, that has turned into a wash, because we have one retiring in March. And another one retiring December twenty third, or leaving the department on December twenty third. So that that there uh has it. Has has made it a wash, we have one in the academy that's coming in in March, that will replace one of the ones that is going to be. Um uh retiring. So we had plans on getting two immediately and one in October, so the one in October now has been moved up to March. To be able to augment, continue to augment the department by two. Um what those two officers will do. Eventually, once we get all the 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 uh the chips where they belong. Will augment two of the shifts. By one. By one officer, that will give us a sergeant and three. We also now have depleted all of our part time uh positions, we have four part time positions. Uh budgeted, those part time positions cover. Eight hours on each one of those shifts. Plus they cover for people that are off because they're sick, vacation, or any kind of leave time. Uh for example, if they ask for a comp comp compensatory time, under FLSA rules, we can't deny it, so. An officer comes in and says, I want. The the next two days comp, we cannot by law, by FLSA rules. Uh deny it, so we have all these things to think about. At any given point now, we will be raising our minimum staffing to three, three officers at all times, no matter what, with this augmentation of the. Of the department. Having said that. The the plan is to. Uh make what is called, is going to be called the love them detail. This detail will consist of one officer, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, will be working. In the area. Uh surrounding these buildings, these three buildings and the adjacent neighborhoods and residential homes. This detail will be handling the calls for service that occur at the building. But not only that, will also. Continue to give the rest of the city the coverage from either two to three other policemen. Depending on how many policemen are working on that on that given day, so there's gonna be. A consistent coverage, visibility is gonna be high. The officers are also gonna be uh advised to walk into the buildings. You know, meet the workers, talk to the workers there, make sure that the citizens that are living in these buildings. Continuously see a cop coming in and out, an officer, coming in and out of the buildings. And uh that should mitigate some of this crime. And some of these calls that are that are coming into this building. Um I think it's a good idea, it's not something that. That we came up with out of the blue, this is something that other cities use. The City of Miami for the for the, for many years has been using what they call the the uh uh brickle detail. And basically, it's the same thing, you brickle in itself is a city because of the amount of people that live on brickle. Well, we are. Very small compared to it, but. If you calculate that there has been a thousand four hundred and seventy five units built in the last five years. Uh you multiply that by two, that's two thousand nine hundred and fifty residents, that's if you were only calculating two. If you calculate three, it's four thousand four hundred and twenty five, so. We're here, the problem is here. Um and and I think this would, uh with your approval, this would, this would help. Uh mitigate some of the the issues that are going on on sixty seventh Avenue. Any questions?
I do, and it's just to be sure I understand. Because when when we, when we talked. You were bringing on two new officers.
Correct.
And I guess I got a little. Uh um misunderstood what you said. Now you realize we have two officers retiring. So how, that to me sounds like a wash, are we still bringing on two?
It's not, and I'll explain it. We have one officer that's in the academy that will be replacing the officer that's leaving in March, so that one is a wash. Okay, that is, that that'll be a body for a body.
Right.
Okay. So we were gonna bring one on now, one in March, and then the one that's in the academy for that wash, that would be two. Okay?
Right.
The problem is that, that after the meetings, I found out that our red light camera officer is also leaving December twenty third. So I have to move an officer from the street into the red light camera position. That is why we're bringing the two in immediately. They're gonna start as soon as they're finished training. Uh our training here in the police department, they're already employed by the city as part-time officers, but they are training on the street. So those two will come on immediately to cover for the one I'm losing in December twenty-third. And, and the, the new position, if you will.
I got it. So we're just bringing them on sooner than we thought.
Correct, correct. The one that we were gonna get in October, we're gonna get in March also. So because we're gonna be losing uh one. And that's the only way I can go ahead and get the shifts covered. I need a sergeant and three, plus the part-timers. And unfortunately, now we have to look and recruit for, for new part-timers.
So best case scenario, we're having three officers and one sergeant on our shift.
Correct.
Which is what we've said we've needed for a very long time.
In, in, in other words, to be able to cover the detail that I'm proposing. And like I said, that detail will be covered for four hours on each shift by the three officers. It'll, it'll go for four hours, and then the other officer will take over for four hours. In other words, rotated it, rotating it between the shifts. And that way, it doesn't become a burdensome uh type of detail. Uh but it will be covered twenty-four seven, as soon as I have these bodies onboard.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
We also spoke to, and I, madam manager, if I may, we, we had a conversation, I think she spoke about it in brief. We, we spoke to one of the man, one of the group of owners of uh one of the buildings on Sixty-seventh Avenue and then two of buildings on Eighth Street. We had a conversation with them, and we spoke about all the incidents that are occurring. And these uh gentlemen were very amicable to any suggestions that we had. They've agreed to allow us, uh carte blanche, to go into their buildings and, and, you know, patrol inside the buildings. They are gonna be signing affidavits, giving us uh trespass authority to any and anybody that in the building that is uh shouldn't be there uh through all their properties. Um they are gonna go ahead and assist as much as possible in trying to mitigate some of these calls, our disturbance calls, and some of the calls are issues of violations of rules and regulations to the building. So they have agreed that they are gonna put out memorandums and also maybe even cite people if administratively on their part for, for violations that the police are being called on that really are not, so they're civil matters. They're not anything that we can get involved in. You know, and unless it's a, a violent situation. For example, loud music at the pool, it's not allowed. It's not a police matter. It's a matter of them go ahead and citing them. But they'll call the police, and we really have no choice but to respond until we get there and see what's going on. And once we see what it is, we advise them, this is a civil matter, and we leave. That took two officers off the road for me. And, and if that call lasts fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, that's thirty minutes that I don't have any coverage because I'm short.
See, that makes perfect sense. Working together with the, with the management company in, in that respect makes perfect sense. So I'm very happy to hear that they are uh willing and able to work with us to, to get this.
And in the meantime, we're still waiting for, and, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're still waiting for the, w- we sent the agenda out of what we wanted to speak about with the other companies. And we should be getting something back soon, and we'll have the same conversation with them. I don't see how they cannot be amicable to the same rules and regulations. I, I, I think that'll work out to a certain degree. I don't know how much time this is gonna take. But I, I, with your approval, I, I, I need these bodies onboard. Uh the, the calls for service that are going on right now are, are incredible, and they're taxing my police department.
Understood, chief, and thank you for that report. Do my colleagues have any questions for the chief on the report that he just presented to us?
Yes.
Uh Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
Chief, uh I, I know we spoke about this uh with the manager and our meeting, and I, I told you, and I still am in favor of uh augmenting the department, the shifts, to respond to the, you know, the hiding crime um and not take away from the patrolling resources for the rest of the city. And I am, I'm in favor of that, obviously. So this isn't about that. It's more about the second part the reporter on, um which I don't think we got a chance to talk about, because I guess that was a result of meetings with the managing companies um about the patrolling in the buildings. I have two concerns. Um one legal and one sort of uh principled. Um one legal being that, uh you know, I, I guess, we'd, we'd be careful with it, too, is we're gonna expose our officers to unnecessary liability um in, in patrolling the building. And, and the principal part is, is basically subsidizing their building security. I think you addressed part of that point when you were talking about uh how some of the calls are, are really rule violations and things that their security should be dealing with and their management should be dealing with. Um and I, I think we have to be careful that in responding to these hiding crimes and, and trying to get those call levels down, that we don't basically hand them on a plate of subsidizing the security via our police department. Um because that's obviously not what our police department is uh, is there to do and, and.
Well, I can reply to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, w- we have a responsibility to the citizens of the city, and these people that are renting in these buildings are citizens of the city. So we have no choice but to respond when they call either nine-one-one or call the station. No matter what, we will respond, no matter what the calls are. Once we get there and we analyze what the call is, we decide whether it's a civil matter and we walk out or not. The only thing that's happening here differently than I would say community policing. Uh under the co- community policing of
Concept.
Concept, if you will. Uh that's what they do. They walk into the buildings, they talk to the manager. They ask him if anything's going on. Can they help with anything? Can they supply them anything? Anything to try to go ahead and bring the numbers down, the crime down. So which is no different than something that we do with the citizens. We see the citizen outside watering the lawn, the policeman stops, ask him how everything is, ask him what's going on. Uh things of that nature. We will not be conducting private security for them. We are answering calls for service. Now during your shift, if you're four hours going around in circles around that area because of the high crime area it, it has become at the buildings, if the officer wants to get out of the car and walk inside, I think it's a good thing. I think it's good for the citizens that live in these buildings to see the officer in uniform. That's a big preventive tool. Um
Yeah, if I can.
Once the numbers are down, we can move that Ludlam detail and expand it, you know, towards.
I, I get it. We didn't, we didn't talk about this, so that, that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up with you now. Um and I, I think it's a good thing that officers engage with the management and, and obviously the citizens that live in the building. It, it just, when, when you said the word patrol the buildings, carte blanche, eh, I just wanted to clarify that we, we weren't gonna start essentially, I mean, patrolling the building and the inside the halls. And I mean, at the end of the day, I get what you're saying, community policing, you, you, you can patrol the sidewalks, but these apartment buildings are private property. You don't patrol inside someone's house. Um that's, that's sort of their responsibility to, 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 to hire security in order to do that. Um
And, and I agree.
Calls, I, I get it.
Go ahead. Go ahead, chief.
Well, I, I, and I agree with you, and I would sincerely hope and pray that they do hire security uh and, and, and put him inside the building twenty-four seven. But I will again tell you that guess what the security guard's gonna do when he's got a problem?
Call the police.
That's, that's something that we have to address with the buildings to, to make sure their security are equipped to handle minor issues. Um the, the, the last thing I wanna ask, ma- madam manager, the, the uh, you told me, you told me over the phone, and you said again this meeting, that the Waterton Management Company um is requiring an agenda that you've put together now for a meeting that they
Yes, sir.
Is that the management company for the building that had the incident?
That, that is correct, sir.
That's insulting. Um I, I, I find, I find that to be incredibly insulting. But um, you know, I hope that meeting goes well. I, I'm happy to, you know, hear your report when it comes back, but I, I find that unbelievable. Not on your end, on, on the end of the management company. Um that, that after a police-involved shooting, they would uh make the management jump through hoops and the police department jump through hoops in order to talk to them. Um but I guess we will see a result of their meeting, but I think uh, you know, we have to take some actions here to, to, to mitigate not only the six seven problem, but the problem that may come on Eighth Street when these buildings come fully occupation, uh fully occupied, um should we not uh respond to not only the police uh augmenting the police shifts, but some, some problems with the managing companies in these buildings. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Uh Madam Manager, before you, you go on, um I'm, well, I, I feel confident that once staff in our police department um enter into talks with uh this management, this particular management company that we're discussing, they will see clearly that it's in everybody's best interest that they do everything they can to work with us um for their tenants, which happen to be our residents. So it's in everyone's best interest that, that they do work to the best of their ability with us and, and see that we're only trying to help and, and make sure that everyone knows. Uh or we set the expectations of our city of West Miami, of who we are and how we um ask things to be done in everyone's best interest. And I'm sure I, I I am very confident that our police department and, and staff will, will relay that message and code compliance quite clearly to, to all these management companies that are involved. And chief, I, I think that's an excellent plan. I commend you on, on coming up with this detail. Um I think it's gonna bring a lot of positive, um a lot of sick, you know, the residents feeling um as safe as they should feel and know that uh the police department is out there looking after us day and night. Anyone else have any? Uh Madam Manager, you were gonna say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just if, if I may, I think that this is also going to assist in restoring that confidence and a sense of, of, of security to the adjacent homes of neighbors that have been impacted as a result of the uh of the criminal activity in these buildings. Uh we have to be mindful that the building tenants or residents, our West Miami residents, but we also have to secure the, the other area. And I think that the chief's plan in this detail addresses that as well. I think that having an officer more devoted to the area in whatever fashion, the way the chief is going to structure this, and I'm gonna wholeheartedly tell you that with his experience and what he's um lived through and, and whatever modifications are made, it's gonna be a good plan. It's not a promise that we will eradicate criminal activity because that's the unknown. However, the presence of our department will be duly noted in the area by both the residential area and the apartment building area. And like the chief said, in the future, we will expand that all throughout our Ludlam corridor, but it's gotta start somewhere. And we were going to address this next, next October, and that's why we were, we have been really big on building reserves because this is a moment in time when you need to, to augment the department, and you need to have money in reserves to be able to put this, to put this plan into action. So that being said, I would highly recommend that we adopt the recommendations of the chief. We're gonna move forward on our end to tackle the, from a code compliance standpoint, from a management company standpoint, is maybe have a better relationship with the management companies and, and, and maybe even entertain quarterly meetings with them so that they can share their concerns with us. What is, how do they think we can make things better? I mean, the, the, the less in, in numbers, and I'm talking about criminal activity that they actually have in these buildings, the more attractive they will become for people to come and live there. So I see this as a win-win situation. I was a little taken aback by their request for an agenda, but in good faith, we submitted to, to them an agenda. And i- in, in, and we mean business. I mean, we want to establish that relationship. However, there are standards of life in the city of West Miami, and we would like to convey those to them, and that's what our, our, our role is uh more as a facilitator and, and getting for them to understand what this neighborhood is all about.
Madam Manager, I actually like what you just said about once we open up these lines of communication, and I know we've already communicated with them uh that Martin has been in talks with them on some other matters. But once we really open up these lines of communication with these management companies, I like the idea of what you said about uh whatever quarterly or, 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 or meetings, so that we stay ahead of anything and on top of everything by maintaining these lines of communication open on an ongoing basis. So that's a very good idea, and, and please incorporate that into, into your talks with them that we expect to have um staff and PD expect to have these quarterly meetings, if not sooner, or whatever you all decide. But that is, that is an excellent proactive um plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any other questions from um Vice Mayor Commissioners for the chief or staff on, on this detail that the chief has presented to us? Uh upon seeing no questions, uh I'm, I, I need an all-in-favor aye to have the chief proceed with his plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, you have a unanimous aye on the chief proceeding with his uh, with his Ludlam detail and plan of action concerning, concerning the uh, the incident.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. We really appreciate the confidence that you have placed in the city, leaders, and, and from the administration, and obviously in the recommendations of, of our chief.
Thank you, and, and I, I, I believe I, I, I said this last minute, but I'm gonna say it again. Uh and I know that I pretty, well, I hope I speak for all of us, and I have a feeling we do, I do. Please make sure that these management, management companies know that we are very, very serious on how we want things done going forward. Be sure they know that we're, we mean this, and we're serious about, about what we're, we're gonna tell them in this detail, and it is for everyone's benefit. So please be sure that, that, that you convey that to the management companies in question.
And we will.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, next item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item eleven D, Report by the Office of City Clerk in reference to records management. And uh uh my report is that uh at the commission meeting of October twenty-first, during the report of the city manager in reference to the office reconfiguration, a discussion ensued in regards to records and particularly the need for storage. Uh I'm reporting that my office has uh tried to work proactively in managing our records, and I, we have to admit that we try to keep our records uh longer for longer periods. Uh just so you know, the records, the process of records management involves like a retention period where uh you have to keep a minimum time, the record that is predicated by our general record schedule that we have to abide to. For example, our records schedule is the GS one S L, which is uh uh predicated by, by the state of Florida. And records, as I said, have to meet a minimum requirement. After that, you can destroy those records. The records destruction usually is done by shredding them or incinerating. Uh there are certain factors that sometimes have to be uh counted on the, on the destruction part. For example, there are records that must uh that have value, uh administrative, legal, fiscal, historical value, so those records are kept. There are records like ordinances, resolutions, minutes, agendas, there are to be kept permanently. So I'm reporting that we're trying to work proactively in managing our records, but something more aggressive will, will involve a, a deal, a great deal of scanning, like money. And uh ju- I just, uh I mean, reporting that if you want to go, us to go, uh I, I mean, and me as the, as the records management liaison. us to go, uh, I, I mean, and me as the, as the records management liaison, if you want, I, if you want us to go more aggressive, that will involve like, uh, a records management schedule in place and will involve like retaining a, a company, uh, scanning. So I would like to hear from you as to how would you like my office to proceed in regards to the records that we have as of now?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I will open it up to the table. Uh, does anyone have any comments or questions for the clerk on, on what she has just reported to us? Uh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I, I caught the end of the last commission meeting, um, the replay where Commissioner Blanis was having a discussion with administration on this issue. Um, I pre-, um, Madam Clerk, I really appreciate you getting ahead of that, actually. Um, and reporting on that today. Uh, and, uh, and, and the part about the document destruction and the record management. I think, um, I, I don't know what my colleagues think, but watching the end of the last meeting, I think that it's clear that we need to do something um, regards to record management. Because piling up boxes and boxes and boxes, taking up office spaces in City Hall is not sustainable. Um, especially in, in the modern era. Um, it just doesn't happen anymore. Um, so I, I appreciate your report. I think, you know, maybe it's time that, that the city take a more holistic approach to, to how we, how we, uh, how we digitize our documents at, at the beginning, how, you know, how we keep our retention schedules. Um, how we destroy documents that are that are already scanned or already on, 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 uh, in other formats. Uh, call it, uh, call it Project Blanis, if you want, be- because of, of, uh, you know, him kind of digging into this issue a little bit. But, uh, I, I think, I think that, uh, I think maybe it's time for for you guys. And I, I, I know I had a discussion with manager, I had a discussion with, uh, with the clerk. I'm, I, I didn't think she was gonna come up with this report, but that was fantastic. Um, and, uh, and I think, you know, I, I, I don't know if there's anything to decide now, but I think there's definitely things that, uh, that the, you know, administrations to maybe start looking at to, and knew the clerk was obviously a custodian of records. Um, to, uh, start to start changing the way we, 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 we deal with our records. Um, because what I heard, and I think I spoke up with the manager, but I heard about, about the conference room being taken out and more record space, I, I, I think, I think we can all agree is, um, uh, uh, not ideal. So, um, I'll leave it at that. I mean, I, I, I think I, I appreciate Commissioner Blanis actually for bringing that kind of back and forth, and, uh, I appreciate the administration on, on their candor on it. So uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I saw a hands up from Commissioner Blanis. He liked being called Project Blanis, so I saw a thumbs up on that. Um, Commissioner, I'll let you go, and then, and Madam Manager, I saw your hand up, so you'll go next, and then and then I also have a, a comment. Go ahead, Commissioner Blanis.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, but no, I think that, uh, it should be called something else. I'm not that organized. But
Then why did you thumbs up? You shouldn't have thumbs up. See, I thought you liked the, the title, but okay.
No, I, I
We'll take it away. All right, no, we took it away.
Okay. No, I, I actually, I, you know, I, I'm glad that he, he's commenting on it. And, you know, the, the, the way that I saw it is, you know, it's, it's, it's common sense, you know, reason, logic, whatever you wanna call it, but you know, to move forward, you know, uh, you know, you have to utilize all the technologies, you know, that are available. Uh, i- i- if you don't move forward, you know, new avenues and new ways and better ways of doing things, you know, will open up. But when you don't move forward and you stay where you are or you move back, you know, you regress. These new avenues and these new possibilities of resolving the issues at hand will never ever open up. So, you know, uh, tha- that's why I made, you know, I, I, I made those comments, and I think we need to find, you know, ways that, uh, you know, we can utilize, uh, and move forward, you know, uh, move mo- move, um, you know, with the times and, and try to use, you know, all the technology available to us. You know, to, to get these things done, because it's, it will be, uh, unsustainable, like the Vice Mayor says.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Manager, go ahead.
Yes, and we agree. Um, I just wanted to, and, and, and definitely, this is the clerk's, uh, territory and, on the records custody of records. I would like to add that, um, as per our plans and in meeting with the attrition that's going to occur here in the front office, we, um, we need to, and we've come to the realization that we need to keep our conference room. Sixty-seventh Avenue incident two weeks ago sort of reminded us of the importance that we have a room large enough for us to huddle with each commissioner and have several department directors, uh, to be able to, to come in and, and and, uh, huddle, if you would, and, and, uh, participate in, in conference rooms. So that being said, I, I think we need to look at, as, as Commissioner Blanis brought out at the last meeting, and as the Vice Mayor has brought out um, during his recent visit and today, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive on uh, scanning, um, or having, um, the older documents that can be disposed or scanned and kept electronically is, uh, maybe seek some proposals from companies that can help us. And moving forward, you know, we, we've had, I started working here in nineteen eighty-two, and we have the same number of staffers in the front office that today that we did back then. Our office hasn't grown. And I think we need to have at least a part-time person in addition to that body that we are replacing to address the attrition in the accounting department. I think we need to have somebody to come in and simply do daily scannings of our deposits and all of our transactions moving forward. They need to be more on the modern side, if you would. And, uh, we will make that happen because we have salary savings and we have some other funds as a result of these attritions that we can devote to the effort. So you have a commitment on our end that we will work um, very proactively, if you would, to, uh, get into the new era and digitize these records, or at least whatever we're able to do as quickly as possible. It may take a couple of years for us to get to where we're going, but there's always a beginning, and you have our word that we will start on this. We may have to bring you a proposal for consideration for the imaging and maybe do this in a two-year or three-year phasing in of the program. However, once we start it, we gotta stay with it.
If, if I could make one last comment?
Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead, sir.
I, I was, and in my recent visit, it sounds like I went to a pink park. My recent visit to City Hall, uh, I, uh, I was very encouraged with the conversations I had with the manager and subsequently the conversations I had with the clerk. Um, the clerk, the clerk advised me, she was way ahead of, uh, the game on on, uh, document destruction and, and stuff like that. She's getting that, that ready, so that was very encouraging. Um, and, uh, so I, I, you know, I, I, I think that we have capable hands, and I, I'm glad that we're, I think, at least at least me, Commissioner Blanis, and I haven't heard from the mayor, but I'm assuming everyone is, I'm, I'm not gonna make any assumptions. I, 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 but the, uh, I, I'm, I'm encouraged that the discussion is being had, and I'm, I'm, you know, encouraged that that the clerk and manager are amenable to, uh, to moving forward at some timeline, hopefully.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and, and, and your assumption is correct. I, I am, I am in support of. It's always, it's always good to to, to better ourselves in any way we can, and this is obviously a way. But, um, I just wanted to say that it's taken us a lot of years to accumulate all these records. So I know that it's going reasonably, it's going to take some time. Um, I'm just happy to see that we are getting in front of it. We're, we're on top of it. But I do realize that it, it'll take some time, but we are, as always, united, we're going in the right direction. We all, we all see that this has to be done, and we're all in support of it. So once again, um, united, we're, we're moving forward, um, to make every, to make, to better this, this, um, situation. So uh, Madam Clerk, uh, staff and a manager, is there any other questions or comments about this? Um, you have our, our approval and our, our, our blessing in going forward. Um, we leave this in your capable hands as always. This is your department and front clerk, you know, the managers, this is, this is all under yours purview. So, um, go forward, um,
Thank you.
Make it better, uh, to the best of your ability. And just report back to us as how, how it's going and, and where we are on this. And you had something to say, Madam Clerk? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, just in closing that up, we trying to coordinate a destruction in the near future. Uh, this, uh, this takes time, as I said, and, and it also takes time to educate. I think it's vital to educate our employees to, to step into new era. It's very difficult, it takes time, but at the end, it will be very rewarding. So we trying to, I, I was, uh, actually having a conversation with the city manager, uh, in the last days. And yes, we gonna try to uh, by departments, uh, to a- assign probably a representative from each, each department where they can they can be in charge of their own records and then report to, to, in this case, to my office. But we, we gonna try to work and, and, and digitizing everything. Actually, uh, as you may know, we ju- we done it in the past. Uh, I was able to digitize all the resolutions, ordinances. And since nineteen forty-seven, it took time, but we did it. So any further projects, I'm sure that we're gonna able, be able to achieve it. So we're gonna be reporting to you. I'm trying to gather contracts from other municipalities in terms of how they manage their records and what companies they have uh, in engagement with, and I'll be reporting to you because at some point probably it'll be beneficial for us to piggyback from a, in another contract from another municipality. So we are working on that, just letting you know that we are, as the manager said, we are working proactively in managing our records. We gonna get it done. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, and Madam Manager, remember, as, as we said in the past, when you were discussing the conference room and the Vice Mayor brought up the conference room. Um, and I know you're moving staff around and, and we're, we're doing a lot of, um, construction and remodeling in the front office. You always have the use of, of our mayor slash commission slash office slash conference room. Um, that is available to, to all of, that is available to everyone to use. Because as you all know, uh, not one of us are here all day, every day, as you all are. So I know that you're gonna be working on that, um, and changing that into whatever it needs to be changed into. But is anyone opposed to, um, my offering our office slash conference room, um, to daily staffs use? I don't see any opposition to that. So, Madam Manager, you, you have access to our conference
Thank you.
Office to see it as you see fit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, with the upcoming audit, uh, right around the corner, sometimes we have the Alliance for Aging. At the same time, we have our independent auditors and we have uh, meeting scheduled in the conference room. So we'll take you up on it if necessary. And, uh, what we're going to do is part of our continuing to sort of line up the office, um, the, the layout of the office. We are, uh, also taking into consideration the small renovation to the mayor and commission office, which has not been touched at least since since I came to work here. So it's long overdue as well.
Yes, ma'am, as we have discussed. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else have anything on this item that we're discussing? I see no questions. Madam Clerk, uh, thank you for your report. And next item?
Item twelve, consent agenda items, none today. Item thirteen, good of the order.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to make note, I have seen, uh, we have had two participants join the meeting. Um, and I just want to open up this time if either one of the two participants that have joined the meeting that I see here on Zoom uh, would like to say, comment, if you would just put it in the chat to me. I don't see that neither of the two participants who came on wish to say anything. So uh, for the good of the order, um,
Madam Ma- Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, before you, um, I'd like to acknowledge a comment on the chat from one of your participants.
I just, I just saw it. It just came on. Uh, thank you, Mayor, no comments. Um, perfect. Okay, so um, with that said, I do have something for the, for the order. And Vice Mayor, I know you mentioned that you heard my character from your resident and that on Halloween night. And that will be all thanks to our amazing IT person, Mr. Q, who was, who was running the show as far as audio and music. So, Mr. Q, thank you for making sure that my Vice Mayor heard heard me at his, at his residence. Your audio system was outstanding. Um, so thank you, Mr. Q, for, for your participation. And your video that you put on Facebook, um, was also it's, it, it portrayed exactly what we wanted to portray, the fun that we had. So thank you, Mr. Q, for everything you did for us for that event. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, I, in that case, need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Motion and this, Mr. Pennard, you wanna say anything? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful, wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.